Ms. Holly?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Mayor, we do have a change to the agenda. We received notice from Ms. Olens yesterday that she will not be able to attend tonight regarding the SLV Tourism and SLV Museum Association, so we have rescheduled her for a different meeting.
Okay, thank you so very much Heather. Okay, Councilman Grego.
With that, I'll make the motion and approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have the Citizens Comment. If you're in the audience and you would like to make a comment, please feel free to come to the podium if you've turned in one of the comment cards. We ask that you keep your comments to less than three minutes. If you speak longer than three minutes, I will politely ask you to end the conversation and the comments at that time. Holly, do we have any comment cards?
I do not.
Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is Consent Calendar A. Has everyone had a chance to review that? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you Mayor. Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, up next, we have regular business. Item A2, sponsorship requests from the Alamosa County Chamber of Commerce for the Second Annual October Brew Fest. Did I say that right? Good. You're welcome. Yes, please.
Hello, good evening. I'm Nikki with the Chamber as well as Delmar Carpet One, and I first off wanted to thank you guys for your sponsorship last year. It was our first annual October Fest and it was awesome. Couldn't have done it as well as we did without your guys' commitment towards that, so thank you very much. A little bit of details about it, we had about nine brewers and two distillers. We are one of the first, maybe the first Brew Fest to have distilleries at the same event, so it turned out really cool. Besides the minor monsoon that happened throughout the day, upon what people who didn't go think, it turned out very well. We had a lot of traffic. Feedback from people that went, they had a great time, music was great, food was great. Feedback from the brewers and distillers, they had a blast, so we're excited to do it this year again, and we have a good list of pretty much same amount of brewers, hopefully one more distiller this year. So it is kind of getting out there and we're excited for it. We've got some bands, some food, distillers, a couple kid things to do, but other than that, we're excited to get it going again. So if we get another commitment from you guys this year as well, we're going to try to keep this going on every year, so. Any questions?
Counsel Grego?
I had one, so are you going to still have it at the same place?
Yes, at Sunset Park.
Yeah, was there any problems with that place?
No.
Did you have enough space and stuff?
It was actually a little more space, which kind of made it nice for room to grow, is our hope. It was nice that it was all fenced off, it was great that it was on that side of town. I know a lot of people appreciated that to kind of move things around a little bit. But no, as far as the fencing and everything, we had a lot of control and we felt like it would work out really well, so.
Great.
I don't see us changing it anytime.
Good, good, good to hear that.
Counselor Daniel?
Thank you Mayor. It was a lot of fun. Can you remind, yeah, I was soaked.
Yeah.
Can you remind me what our sponsorship was last year?
It was 5,000.
It was 5,000 last year?
Yep.
Okay. Counsel, I think we all know that we have spent our sponsorship money, so I have concerns about this. I know Heather sent us, there's some potential things out there. I personally, not about this event, but truthfully just about our budget and trying to be responsible. I feel like we obviously can't do what we did last year. I do think that this being the second year, they still need support if we can manage it. I am struggling personally, I'll just say as my representation, I would much rather commit personally to the event, which I can do outside of this, than vote to expend a budget we don't have. That's my personal thing with this, but I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say too.
Okay, Counsel Vehil.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Daniels, I appreciate and respect your opinions. Over the week, when we got the, since last week when we got the agenda and we saw that they were coming to ask for some sponsorship money, I asked Heather in an email if, because I remember we have that $29,000 set aside for economic development, and I know a large chunk of that goes to ACID, and there's some other monies in there. If I recall from our budget meeting last week, that some of that money goes towards maybe other sponsorships or, help me out Heather, other?
So yes, so I did look at our economic development account. It funds not only ACID, but our facade grant. We did do a very small sponsorship for VIP and the Economic Summit efforts, less than $500. We also fund a portion of the meals for the healthcare sector partnership meetings in order to encourage attendance. The budget is 46,000, however, we've had some unanticipated expenses out of there for the ranch and airport. We needed to get appraisals and designs and some stuff like that, so we are most likely going to go over budget in that line item. However, there's another line item in the non-departmental budget that we have about 1,800 in there. I definitely wouldn't recommend using the full 1,800, but if council wanted to use 1,000 or less, we'll probably be okay with how we're tracking on the use of that fund. The other piece of information is our Parks and Rec Director shared with me today that we were charging for the stage, I believe, so if there's, if that's something that council wants to put in there as an in-kind, in combination maybe with some cash as well, that might be worthwhile.
So with that information I would offer, and I agree with you Counsel Daniel, that we need to do, we as council need to do a better job of, we've got to control this a little bit, as well as inform all these groups and events that come to ask for money to get here earlier in the year. So with that, I would offer maybe we sponsor $1,000 and do in-kind on the stage.
And the tent?
Counsel Grego?
Was that a motion Counsel Vehil?
No, it's a suggestion.
So a suggestion, yeah. Because I was going to ask, is there any other services that the city offers, and Andy already pointed out the tent and?
I have the tent and the stage. I have a permit for expense for permit, but I don't know if that applied to us.
I agree.
Okay. No, I think that's pretty much everything pertaining to the city.
And I agree with Counselor Daniels, but I've been one that we put a little bit of seed money into all these groups until they get going, and it just so happens that the seed money stuff is all gone, so I think that's something council probably needs to look at and maybe think of maybe even extending that a little bit or not, you know, depending on the groups that have been coming, because this is a form of economic development and people coming into town and stuff, and usually they stay a couple days and so.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with Counselor Vehil that we should put something towards it and with those figures he's talking about, so thank you Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
There wasn't a motion.
Oh, there wasn't a motion, oh, okay, sorry. Okay, sorry.
Just curious, out of curiosity, how much is the marketing district?
What's that?
Have you gone to the marketing district?
Um, we did, and they sponsored as well last year, and they did it in a form of a grant, if that makes, is that correct? And they did it again this year for 3,000 versus 3,300, so.
Mayor, oh, sorry.
Counsel.
I move that we sponsor the October Brew Fest for $1,000 out of the miscellaneous line item, as well as give them in-kind for free, the stage and the tent.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Well, I just have a comment. Last year I had an opportunity as well to go to the event, and it was pouring down rain. Counselor Daniels and I and some other people were there, and I was really impressed with the turnout, even though it was raining really hard.
Me too.
The cool thing was, is I talked to at least almost, I would say, two-thirds of the vendors there, and a large number of them were from out of town.
Yeah.
So those people were really filling our hotels as well, eating at our restaurants and doing other business in our city, and I really can see how successful this event can become, so.
Yes.
I really do wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Start voting everybody.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just quickly, if you want to send us an invoice, we can process that sponsorship, and then I didn't know if you wanted to highlight the dates and time.
Yes, I do. So again, it's at Sunset Park on September 29th, which is a Saturday, 1 o'clock to sunset, so. And we did have a lot of overgrowth into downtown because it was raining, everybody wanted to get somewhere and enjoy in downtown, so they were pretty busy last year too, so. It was good.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you too.
I have a question.
Yes.
Heather, my question is, do you, is it possible, and this, and it may be something we talk about differently, but obviously we have run into this where we're obviously overspending and potentially, I guess not considering all of the different sort of needs and wants, and I know, I guess one of the things I do like about the marketing board is they have a date where everybody does their presentation or has their, I guess, ask-in. Is it possible that we could start potentially doing something where we have a date and we tell everybody that we need to have it in by a certain date so that we can sort of analyze all of them and then know how to divvy up the money?
There's pros and cons to that. I think the pros is that it's a more transparent and fair process. The con is you are going to get a lot of requests, and I know from talking to the marketing district, they have to sometimes set up parameters because they were getting people under different umbrellas asking for the same event, or just some different things like that, but I mean, they get a lot of requests through that process, and so councils, if we do that, my advice is that council's going to have to be very, very comfortable sticking to the budget amount when faced with people in front of you can be more challenging for that, and so that's the only con, but it is more organized, transparent, probably fair. You don't have this thing where someone's event is towards the end of the year compared to where the event's at the beginning, but it will generate more interest and more requests.
Okay, we're good, thank you. Okay, up next, business brought forward by the city staff public works.
In the process of designing the Montana Azul Park, it was made clear that, am I okay, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
It was made clear that the park, the concept of the park is to put drain rock underneath the park surface and maintain the stormwater retention facility in that manner. The soils have been investigated in that area, they are extremely tight, they will not dissipate the water into the groundwater, and also the evaporation, because we've covered the pond over with the park, and it's now taking place underground, or stored underground, there's very little evaporation that'll take place. It is calculated that it will take 69 days to evacuate the water from the design storm, which is the 100-year 24-hour storm, and that simply does not, it takes away the functionality of the detention basin. So the solution, the proposed solution to that problem is to install a lift station, what we're calling the Foster Lift Station, or the Montana Azul Lift Station, I guess is what we've called it here, and we would discharge potentially to the Hickory Jackson Ditch. We may have to discharge in another manner, but in the way that we would budget for the $250,000 that we estimate that we will need for this lift station is delay the reconstruction of the Alamosa Lift Station and move that project from 2020 to, move those project monies from 2020 to 2019 so that we can construct this lift station in time to build the Montana Azul Park.
The other aspect is that as that area develops, we would have needed a lift station, so clearly we're putting it in sooner than we need because of the development perspective, but we would look at subdivision agreements as those occur to recoup some of the cost of this lift station if that area develops.
And adding on that, we had figured, I believe at one-quarter the cost of the lift station to be in the SID we discussed previously, so if you looked at your costs on the SID, that lift station cost is reflected there.
Okay, counsel, any comments, questions? Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
So delaying, and Mark, I'm sorry if I misread, delaying the reconstruction of the Alamosa Lift Station, what are the long-term impacts of that, or how far, like, are we okay to do that? What's the?
I would like to get to that lift station sooner rather than later. We have identified some monies elsewhere in the enterprise funds to do a pump replacement in the interim, and I think we can nurse that lift station along with a pump replacement at this time and be okay. I really don't want to make the habit of this, because we do need to address our lift stations.
Thank you, Mark, for that. I also think we do have the grant funding that has been put in place for this park, that if we don't do this this year right, we wouldn't be able to keep those funds, Heather?
If we don't do it within the next, this year and next year, so we're still okay on a timeframe. The other part is, we recently had our budget meeting with the CIP meeting, and it's for the first time that we actually have lift stations in the CIP, and so that is part of what we reviewed, so we are making more progress from a planning perspective for those needs than we have been able to in the past.
Counsel Brawls?
Well, it sounds like this lift station is needed, and so we should do it sooner than later, so that part can get put in, in time, so, you know, I'd go with the recommendation. I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, start voting. Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have the city manager legal, adoption of the vision and mission statements.
Thank you Mayor. We recently held council's retreat, and as part of that, council had expressed interest in looking at the mission statement and vision. We had a facilitator who came and brought some energy to this topic, and council very quickly was able to work together and develop what you see before you for the vision. It is the city will provide a compassionate, welcoming and collaborative environment for its residents, visitors and businesses. Alamosa will be a driver of business-friendly economic development while valuing and embracing our rich heritage and history of ethnic and cultural diversity. The mission statement is we are committed to providing balanced, effective and efficient public services for our residents, visitors and businesses by cultivating a vibrant, resilient and livable city.
Counsel, who was first? Okay, Counsel, Counsel Vehil, and then Counselor Brawls.
Thank you Mayor. I would just like to give kudos to Counsel Brawls. For almost a year now, he's been talking about wanting to change a few things in this vision and mission statement, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think we put a lot of effort into this, and I appreciate the council coming together for this vision. I like the vision. I think it gives us a good direction, and upon that, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'm gonna let Counselor Carson say something too, I believe he has a comment, and then we'll go to that if it's okay.
I just wanted to make the comment that, just so that everyone out there knows, I've been part of mission statement creation in the past, and the group that we have here, the group that you have as a council, is an excellent team. It was a, it was a pretty good and efficient process to come up with it, and it was probably the, one of the more expedited ones I've seen, and it was actually more on point than some of the ones I've seen. It's an excellent mission statement, an excellent vision statement, and I just want, you know, to let everyone know that from my perspective, this is a great, great team that you guys have leading your city, and that's not, you know, saying anything about me personally, but just in general, they did a great job. You guys, thank you very much, and thank you Counsel.
Thank you Counselor Carson.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so we have a motion by Counselor Brawls and Counselor Daniel.
I will second that motion to approve the vision and the mission.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Great job. All righty. Up next, we have committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports? Counselor Brawls?
Yes, I've, a little bit, I've attended a couple of events that I think is good. Talked about the lead program. Mayor Coleman and myself met with the people that were working with the lead program, impressed with them. They said they have eight clients, and they said the police department is really working with them, which is good, because it's a change of kind of the comfort level of our community. But I think that, I think that's the way to address the opioid and the crime that deals with opioid problem in our community, and I think that's a good start, so I commend that group, and let's see how it works out.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much Counsel Brawls. Okay, anyone else with any council comments? Okay, committee reports, I'm sorry, committee reports.
Yeah, I might mention, I did, I did attend city court yesterday, just to see the, just to see the process, and again, I'm impressed with our judge. I think he's done a good job, and it's good to come and see, you know, the issues that they deal with, so I did attend and observe them, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, well, I went to the Parks and Recs Board meeting this week, and I'm quite sure Andy will probably cover anything that needs to come up, but I was really impressed with how many people packed that room that we were in the other day, and it shows a lot of people are really interested in the direction of the Parks and Recs Department, and also Counselor Carson showed up and gave some good insight as well, so it went really well, and I'm quite sure Andy may cover some of those if, when we get to staff announcements. Okay, you're welcome. And Counselor Hensley was there as well, so I apologize. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I did go to marketing board, and pretty, not a whole lot, I mean, obviously it's an important meeting, but nothing too major, but one of the nice things that was interesting is the sand dunes is applying to be certified as a dark place, and it has to do with how dark the sky is from the sand dunes, and there's quite a bit of criteria they have to go through, but it's looking like it's going to happen, and so I just think that's a pretty neat specification that it's going to have, and so I just thought that was kind of neat to hear about, and they walked through the process of what they're having to do. So they're not quite there yet, but there's quite a few different things they have to do to have that certification, so, I think I thought that's kind of cool, that's something really neat for our community.
All right, good, thank you. Mayor? Yes, Counsel Grego?
I don't know if this is a committee word, and I don't know if they were going to address it this evening, the Kaboom Park. Andy, I wanted to say a couple of comments on this.
Okay.
We, over the weekend, we got together, the community, some of our council people, and put together that park, and I was just, it was just amazing how, you know, our departments like Andy and Jess and our fire chief in his fire department were there, and sure, Heather, I don't see how she was on the floor there on the concrete, it was, it was hot, hot day, you know? And then we were, we were kind of falling behind on the concrete, and lucky thing Liz has some connections over at the college, and she brought down the whole offensive line from the college. So those guys, we were mixing one sack at a time, those guys came in and started mixing three at a time.
Wow.
And they caught up, it even backed up. And then we have, you know, our youngest counselor, he tried to stay up with those young college guys, he kind of did a good job with hanging in with them, because he was, he was even cramping up there at the end, so, so that goes to tell you, but I think the community came together and everybody that was there, you know, they did a great job, and I'm glad that they look at our community when stuff like that happens, because Heather pointed out to me that this is five, I thought there was only three, four, four parks that they've been in.
Wow.
So, but, I just, I just thought, and maybe, I don't know if Heather wants to say anything more about it, but I just thought I'd make a little couple of comments on it.
Thank you Counsel Grego. Yes, Heather?
So yes, this is the second park this year from Kaboom, it's the third one for the city, so Kaboom has been very, very fortunate for us. The fourth park is from the Colorado Health Foundation. So Kaboom kind of organizes it and clearly rolls up their sleeves and gets everything working to get a park built in one day, which is amazing, but it's not possible without their donor, and so both Kaboom projects this year, as well as the Montana Azul and Playground out at Farm Park, is all through the Colorado Health Foundation. So it's quite the investment in our community.
Thank you, and thank, thank you to everyone who participated.
Can I add one more little thing to this?
Yes.
I just thought it was really interesting, so obviously talking to the football players, they, they got a lot out of it, and quite a few of them are very involved in Boys and Girls Clubs when they were growing up, and it was real, it meant so much to them, to quite a few of them, that they could do something that helped the Boys and Girls Club, and they didn't realize it until they got there, but, and how many of them said, you know, our Boys and Girls Club, all we had was a gym, or all we had was this, and so this was something where they thought, how cool is it for our kids to have more than just a gym, and to actually continue to develop the Boys and Girls Club arena and what it means and their mission? So it was, I think, an added benefit that really meant a lot, so anyway, I just thought I'd add that, it was kind of cool.
Thank you so much, and thank you for getting them to come out there and help out, that's great. All righty, okay, up next, we have staff announcement.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
Mark will make his way up to provide an update on First Street, but I did want to remind council of some upcoming events. We just sent out today an announcement for the Blanca Vista Dog Park Ribbon Cutting. That will be next week, Thursday, August 23rd at 5 o'clock. We also have, we, the community has SLV Local Foods Coalition Local Event at the Rio Grande Farm Park, August 26th. The draft Alamosa Ranch Plan, following the public input that we've received, that will be presented to the public for public comment, August 29th. We have Early Iron Festival coming before your next meeting, which is, the Early Iron Festival is August 31st through September 1st, and we have set the fireworks show to be September 2nd, so quite a few activities coming up before your next meeting. You had requested maybe just a quick overview of the rec board, I can, I can do that quickly if Andy's okay with that. They did have a presentation from the Alamosa Youth Wrestling. It's one of the few groups that the city actually provides a little bit of financial support towards, and so the board is trying to think through if that's something that we should continue, and is that on par with what we're doing with some other organizations? So the representatives were there to talk about what the money's used for, their history, all of that kind of information. They also talked about the five-year capital improvement plan. You might recall when we had our budget Um, you might recall when we had our budget meeting, we had caught a last-minute error in one of the formulas for the park, Parks and Rec fund balance and so we've made corrections, um, which then, well, they voted to recommend a, a slightly reduced CIP to council, so thankfully, we did have the timing of this schedule to where they could process that and make some recommendations to council for when you hear the, the budget proposals again on September, the first meeting in September. We also then, Andy and staff did really quick updates on Revitalize the Rio, the ranch planning efforts, um, the golf course, noxious weeds. Andy has worked with, um, Western Rivers to submit the GOCO application for the Chefis property. I believe that's about 700,000 request. Um, we did an update on the Kaboom, the Montana Azul Park. Staff gave their regular update on the programs and activities and then, um, we probably should do an update at the next meeting on the trails because seeing that map and the trails that our community has, I think, is pretty darn exciting, so maybe we'll do just a quick update with that visual at the next, um, meeting. So that was the rec board.
Okay, First Street. So, um, we had one final utility surprise that had to jump up and, and grab us last week. Um, since we, Century Link has a fiber optic cable that was unlocated and unmarked and it is located actually right where we wanna put our curb and gutter. So they are, as of midnight tonight, going to have that removed. It actually is amazing that we didn't cut it when we removed the old curb and gutter and it actually is the fiber optic link that provides all the, the, well, provides the major connection to the SLV Regional Medical Center, so we're kinda glad that didn't get cut. Anyways, and, uh, Mr. Gardner and I were noting, after this is taken care of tonight, will be the first time between the city and Gardner excavation, we are in control of the project. There is no third potteries that have anything to do with us after tonight and so we're in control of our own destiny. So as of today, we believe that we're 38 days behind ske- completion schedule. So scheduled completion as of today is September 19th, but because it's in our control, we actually think that we probably will beat that date, but we're gonna say to the public the completion date is September 19th and hopefully we get it done sooner. Um, I think I'll leave it at that unless there's any questions.
Uh, Counselor Hensley?
I just have a quick question. So thank you for all you've been doing. I know it's been challenging, um, not to jinx things or anything like that, but would weather have, is weather gonna, could be an issue or?
It's your fault if it happens. Yeah, yes, it could delay us, but we have most of the base course down and in this, in, in this instance, this phase, we chose to put geotextile underneath that base course so that even if it gets saturated, it shouldn't get trashed by the underground, by the underlaying material. So we think we're gonna be okay.
Alright, thank you so very much for that update. Really appreciate it, Mark. Okay, any other?
I just, I just wanna, Mark, don't go too far. I, I know we wanna be done here, but I just wanna make sure everybody understands because and if you haven't done these kind of projects before, um, people may not be aware of how the process works, but when the city is getting ready to do the project, we put into the pipeline for notification to all utilities that this project is getting ready to happen and they're all supposed to be marked, we're supposed to have all that information at hand, so then the project can move in a, in a nice manner. So, um, it's, it's extremely hard and out of our control. I mean, this is literally something that's out of our control of these utilities not being where they're supposed to be and those types of things. Now, we are going to do some, some work ahead of time for some of the next phases, once we know the CIP is approved and what those look like, um, but again, I, I don't, I, I don't want this to be a reflection on staff. I hate that, that our, our deadlines are getting extended. It's not something that was within our control when we get out there and start digging and something's not even located. I mean, that's, that's a really, really big deal and so you may not have picked up on some of that with Mark's words, but I just wanna make sure I emphasize that.
One other thing, we did, we did hold, I believe it was four pre-construction meetings, specifically to have all the utilities at the table. That actually played in our favor here. I was able to reach out to the contact, the, the design engineer for Century Link that attended our meetings and he jumped right on this and was able to turn it around really quick. His, his name is Guy Onan and, um, I think that, just having those coordination meetings, we were able to react to this last one pretty quickly, but...
But again, staff held four coordination meetings prior to construction.
Yeah, and one of the, the major things that slowed us down was the, the ASU power and, and, uh, fiber was supposedly way high in the structure so we could go under it with our, um, storm drainage line. We had to, to get it under it, we actually had to redesign, change it from a 24-inch to two, um, 15-inch lines, stand a little bit reduced capacity, but we had to get it shrunk so we could get underneath, physically get underneath it at all. And so, you know, we had, we had lots of challenges, lots of challenges and most of them were beyond our control. Uh, virtually all of them were on, beyond our control.
Well, I'm sure glad you all didn't cut that cable that would affect at the, uh, hospital and whoever identified it, tell them thank you for helping that not happen.
Well, you know where I'll be after this meeting.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. Up next, oh, sorry, any more staff announcement? Okay?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Up next, uh, we have, um, liquor licensing, authority actions. Eric, I believe, and Holly?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, um, application for liquor license, um, by Pester Marketing and just, just for the purposes of the applicant and anybody in the audience who may be wishing to speak on this application, what will happen is, um, Holly will give just a little background and then, um, I will open up, uh, the public hearing for this and the applicant will, uh, provide a, a background information for council and present its case as to proving to council that there is a need and desire of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood, which is defined as the city limits plus a one-mile radius unless the applicant asks for a different definition, that there is a need and desire of those adult inhabitants to have, uh, this liquor license be issued. Um, and with that, um, Holly, if you just wanna let them know what's going on with the application?
Okay, so this, um, so Pester Marketing, um, which is Alta Fuels Out by Walmart, located at 3213 Main Street. Um, they've applied for a firm rented malt beverage, the 3-2 off-premise license. Um, I accepted their application administratively on June 12th, um, did the background checks and, um, their application has been, was approved by me. They do have a current sales tax license, they're eligible to be licensed. Um, the manager on the application, they listed Richard's Frasier. Um, they do hold two other licenses within the city limits, um, one located on Denver Avenue and then the other located on State Avenue. Um, the applicant is a corporation and they have possession of property through a lease. Um, the council communication included the preliminary factual findings, which included that information. Um, it included the license application as well as the drawing of the premise. Um, they posted the property, letting the public know about this hearing on July 2nd and then the legal notice required for a liquor license was published in the Valley Courier on August 1st.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, Mayor, I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to present council its case for issuance of a liquor license.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, my name's Dennis Dirksey and it's spelled D-I-R-K-S-E and I live at 1239 West Tlone Cowboy in Pueblo West Colorado. Um, I'm the Vice President of Operations for Pester Marketing, doing business as all to convenience. Um, I have a couple of people with me in case you had questions for them. I have our area supervisor, her name is Maria Skerr and she runs all of our stores in, in the valley area. And then I have, uh, Lenny Wrangle, she, and he runs, uh, the, he's the onsite manager for that location that we're applying for. Okay? Um, we're currently applying for a 3-2 off-premise beer license, um, at this location and we do have also Max Scott with Oedipus with us and he's going to present our petition opinion poll results. Just to give you just a little bit of a background, if it's okay, I, I won't take up too much of your time. Um, I've been in the convenience store business for 32 years and been in the position to sell alcohol for several of those. Uh, my current position is Vice President of Operations. I oversee 109 stores and 750 employees. Um, we currently have over 40 licenses and I can tell you, in the last four years I've been in this position, we've had zero violations. Um, we have read the beer code, the Colorado Beer Code and we are familiar with the beer, um, beer code. Legal drinking ages 21, um, current age to sell alcohol is 18 years of age, um, hours we are able to sell is 8:00 AM to midnight, um, types of acceptable identification, uh, which must not be expired. Um, we take about 99% of ours are state-issued driver's license or state-issued ID cards, but we also accept military ID passports and alien registration cards. Um, a little bit about the outlet, uh, operation. Um, the stores open from 5:00 AM till 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Um, the store currently has five employees. Um, where we would locate the beer in the store will be, uh, you'll be able to view it from the register area so they'll be able to see everything that's going on at the time. Um, as far as our employee training, uh, the next available tips class that's available in Alamosa, we'll have them run through it. Um, it'll be mandatory for all employees. Uh, we currently have our own pro, well, it's, it's a convenience store program, it's through the National Association of Convenience Stores and it's called Techniques of Alcohol Management and it's directed specifically to convenience stores and we are a member of that, um, where all of our employees are trained, um, on the techniques of alcohol management and alcohol, and also tobacco sales in all of our stores. So that's a mandatory, so there, we have a kind of a bridge, I would say, between tips training, uh, for all of our new employees too. Um, we are a member of the bars program and I don't know if you're familiar with bars. Um, what bars does is, is that they send, they send a person into your store that's between the ages of 21 and 26 years old, um, and they, they attempt to purchase, uh, or try to purchase alcohol or tobacco depending on the, um, the visit they're going for. If the employee doesn't ID them, they get a red card. If they do ID them, they get a green card. Okay, the red card, for us, if they get a red card, that, that starts a progressive discipline process. We take them back through retraining, um, and give them a counseling report. If it happens again with the employee, we take the next progressive step, which is counsel, or which should be an employee warning report and then on the, if there's a third offense, we're really considering if they should be employed with us at all. On the green card, on the good side, is we reward our employees for doing a good job. So they, they use that green card just like cash in our stores, okay? Um, we ID anybody who appears to be under the age of 40, um, and the register systems that we have, um, there, it's a passport system, so you can scan the IDs on the system. Um, and the last thing I'd like to say is if we ever have an employee who sells to a minor, they're immediately terminated, okay? Um, that's all I had and I wanted to go ahead and let Max take over the rest. He'll, he'll go through the needs and desires surveys for us.
I take it you don't swear witnesses? I swear to tell the truth anyway.
We do not. Glad that you are going to tell the truth.
I can tell you the last time I lied. When I was married to my first wife. Uh, my name's Max Scott. I own and operate Oedipus Incorporated. Um, we're at 1216 Tipperary Street in unincorporated Boulder County. I say that to avoid all of the jokes. I think I've heard them all. Um, we're in our 50th business year. We've done several thousand surveys throughout the state of Colorado. We've had and continue to have municipal contracts where the city actually hires us, uh, to do a survey for some type of an alcohol license. Uh, been involved in three, uh, continuing legal education seminars and our survey procedures and petitions have been the subject of several, um, what are called Rule 106 decisions. Uh, your attorney will know about that, uh, two of which were published and the courts have said we're legally on point, scientifically accurate, NSC into the horn toot. Um, we were hired by, uh, Pester to do a number of stores. Uh, we enter into an agreement, we don't, uh, guarantee survey results and we were paid in advance. Dennis has seen me do this before. Thank you. We just got a second check in. Um, helps pay the rent. Um, we, um, did the survey and then pre-fired electronically with Holly and thanks for your help, uh, on this and then filed the originals, uh, today. Do you folks have a copy of our report?
They don't have a copy, but I just passed it to them, so.
Okay, so they have one copy and they can pass it down? Okay. Um, let me address the petitions first. Uh, the petitions, um, are addressed to what are called parties and interests. That's business owners or managers or residents of the defined neighborhood and then we screen them to make sure they're 21 because that's the, um, uh, age of sale and, uh, consumption. Um, just above the signature, there, there are two statements, one for and one against and just above the signature line, it explains why the survey is being conducted, in this case per CRS 1246, that's the 3-2 beer code. And then, um, there's a statement that says if you have been, uh, think you've been unduly influenced and it has Holly's, uh, name and telephone number. Did you get any calls, Holly?
I did not.
Oh, goodie. Um, so then, uh, when the, um, survey is presented, uh, we tell them what the, uh, application is for and then we ask, are you for or against and then they can sign either for or against and then they execute on the petition format and then we have them write in the reason. So as those petitions get passed down, um, there are business petitions, I think there's two sets of those, uh, 'cause we had two people working the businesses and then residential petitions and the defined neighborhood, the city, uh, is the, uh, map at the beginning of the petition, um, documents and it shows an area through which those particular petitions were circulated and when you get our survey report, uh, the one in that, I think it's in a red binder and you go to, um, the last page, uh, there's, um, your jurisdiction and then the map is color-coded, um, and the green areas are business, green and blue areas are businesses that we surveyed and then the pink areas are the residents that we surveyed and the purpose of the survey is to get an opinion out of the neighborhood with sampling throughout the geographical, uh, area. Um, that gets me to page two of my report, if you have occasion to see it. Um, item number one is we're reporting to the client that we contracted, that we did what we contracted to do. It's essentially a, um, a, um, a, a reporting of all the doors that we knocked on. Um, item number two on page two are people that were for or against it for whatever reason. Um, business is 33 favoring, seven against, residents is 132 favoring and 18 against. Um, and then where people write in reasons and it's usually the people that are opposed to the license that write in the reason, uh, we had seven no need, so they made some kind of a comment, there's enough, there's too many or whatever it might be. Um, we had four abhorrence of alcohol, that's a Supreme Court phrase. Abhorrence of alcohol means you don't need alcohol, that's the purpose of this hearing, so that's a desire reason only and the statutory test and the statutory test is a reasonable requirement to the neighborhood desires of the adult inhabitants or the Supreme Court phrase, needs and desires. Um, so needs and desires is conjunctive, it's not need or desire, um, so abhorrence of alcohol goes on to the desire side. We had five commercial usage objections. I don't know how long ago that piece of ground was zoned, but that horse left the barn on the day that it was zoned, so it's zoned for, uh, retail use. One miscellaneous reason and then eight no reason given. Uh, in this survey category, for or against for whatever reason, if you round up, uh, it's 87% favoring the issuance of the license and then if you buy, our argument and subtracting out the desire reasons only... out the desire reasons only, and this is per our understanding and involvement with Colorado case law, the survey result goes to 96%. These are exceptionally good survey results, excuse me, for a 3-2 off-premise license. People tend to have concerns about off-premise licenses for a number of reasons, and I can tell you why if you want to hear them, but these are the kind of results that we usually get with hotel restaurant licenses or other types of on-premise licenses, like a beer and wine, or a lodging and entertainment. So both survey categories show a need and a desire and argue that the license should be issued. The margin of error is 2.6%. Added in or subtracted out, both are well over 50%. That's all I have. Perhaps you have questions.
Eric.
Well, he's inviting questions from counsel. We will, I think it makes sense to, if counsel has questions, particular to this presentation, to ask them now, and then we will have anybody who is sitting in the audience in which is to speak, speak as well.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Mayor.
Yes, Counsel Gregel.
I had a question for our city attorney. This stuff is, will that be entered into evidence, or prior, other evidence that, like in the beginning, the maps and stuff, is that stuff that will be entered, or?
We're going to enter the posting that was done on the property that it looks like Holly has, sitting at her right hand, and we will enter this. I haven't seen it, so I'm not sure what to call it, but it sounds like it's a report on survey results as exhibits one and two.
I'll go sit down, and then if you have a question, I'll come back. Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh.
Tell us the process you went through to get the petitions. You had people circulate those?
Oh, yes. So we have employees that have been trained, and that's usually a day or two process to make sure that they understand how to conduct the survey and monitor each signature entry, no ditto marks, and so on and so forth. So when the neighborhood was defined by the city clerk's office, we then assigned areas to circulate throughout the city for a geographical representation. Then each surveyor went into that particular neighborhood, and they'd have to have so many completions, like maybe 25 or 20 completions. A completion is a signature either for or against. Then, and they also keep track of their not-at-homes, so when they go back to the company car, they would return to some of those not-at-homes or not-at-businesses and then go to the next area. Once the survey is completed, then it's brought back to the office, and it goes through a two-step editing process to ensure the integrity of the signatures, and then this report is prepared. Did I answer your question?
Yes, somewhat. How did you choose the areas to?
Just the geographical representation of the neighborhood.
You just randomly selected them, or?
Yeah, I can show you a master circulation map if you'd like to see one.
It was on the petition, I think, is the circulation.
Well, that's where the circulation actually.
I just wondered how you chose those areas.
We chose them to be a geographical representation throughout the neighborhood. So they're given an area, and they have to have so many completions from that area. When they get that number of completions done, then they move to another area, and did you have occasion to look at the last page of the original report? That's the red one. That shows you where the circulators were throughout the neighborhood, and then each one of those survey packets has that area highlighted where that surveyor was. In other words, this is door-to-door, it's not over the counter. We're not encountering people down at the post office or at a grocery store or anything like that. We're actually going to the door, voireering them, and then giving them an explanation of the application, and then let them sign as they wish.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of issuance of this license? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to issuance of this license?
My name is, my name is Darrell Cooper. I live at 2315 Thomas Avenue. I would question that there's a need to issue another license of this type in that area. Walmart is less than two blocks away, and also the boot, Beer Cag Liquor Store is within two blocks, both of them selling packaged liquor. I would speak in opposition to that. I don't see that there's a need for this to move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the issuance of the license being applied Unless the applicant wants to address anything further, I think it's up to counsel. Go ahead, sir.
One thing I just wanted to say is, you know, we're kind of right on Main Street, and it's travel location. We get a lot of out-of-town people that come through that are asking for beer. You know, will they stop in Alamosa if they can't get it at our place? We're on the edge of town. Will they keep on going? I think, I think we have, not just the community, but we have a lot of people that travel through that, that show that they want, you know, that they do want us to have it, so. So I just kind of wanted to add that. And if you had any questions for me, I guess I didn't give you a time to ask questions of me, but if you have anything you wanted to ask me, I can try to answer it now for you.
Any question? Counsel Brawls?
You say you manage how many stores? 30?
I have, I have 109 stores.
And have you had any of those, any violations?
In, in the four years that I've been in this position, we've had zero violation, and that's with 40 beer licenses.
And you've had no revoked revocations?
Ever.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric.
Okay, Mayor, I'll close the public hearing and return the matter to counsel for further discussion.
Counsel Vehil.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Holly, could you please remind me what a 3-2 license off-premise is?
The 3-2 off-premise is the lesser beer, so it's not the full-strength beer, and off-premise means they buy it at the store and they take it off-premise. They can't consume on the premise.
Okay, and then if, so if we were to approve this, allow this license, people could only buy 3-2 beer or lower?
Correct, except for as of January 1st, 2019, they can sell full-strength beer.
Would they have to come before us?
No.
They could just do it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Brawls?
Well, just to remind counsel, we have, we have 41 liquor places that you can buy liquor, and for a city of 10,000, that's, that's a lot of places. And I just worry about our youth. I mean, that's, you got Walmart out there, you have, I mean, that's close to a couple of schools, too, and I worry about our youth, again, having access to alcohol, and particularly concerned since January 1, it can go to full strength.
And all, all 3-2 off-premise will go to that.
So, you know, we're going to have that compounded in our city. So I, again, I just don't see that they've established a need, in my opinion, to have another liquor, liquor establishment in Alamosa.
Counselor Henson.
So I'm going to be honest, I came in here to this meeting, and I truly, I always like to feel I do come in open-minded, but, you know, at the same time, you start having ideas of what you're going to come in thinking. And I was concerned with the idea of, that, I think my bigger concern was that these 3-2s are going to switch over and that the competition and stuff, but at the same time, I will tell you, you did a fantastic job with your research. You did a fantastic job. I like the fact that you also, people who got, if they weren't for it, we saw that as well, so it wasn't just one-sided. I also feel this has been posted, and if different liquor stores and stuff were against this, I'm not seeing them here. I had one contact me about two months ago with concern in regards to, obviously, not so much the 3-2 part of it, but what's going to happen going forward in January. But I think you've done a great job persuading the idea that, obviously, there's a lot for it, and like I say, there's, you know, I'm not seeing a lot of community members saying, hey, I don't think we should do this, and especially even some of the competition. So, and I just want to commend you for such a phenomenal job. It's very complete, very thorough, and I really appreciate that.
Just, just if I could interrupt. Counsel Hensley mentioned that she was contacted before the hearing, but your decision is based on what's presented at this hearing.
Thank you. Counsel Gregel?
I just wanted to make some comments on the management part of this organization. I've had an opportunity to know Dennis for a lot of years, and Maria also, and the way they run their outfit, and it shows, like, how they did their homework, you know? And I think they, they do a great job, and their stores are nice and clean and stuff, and it's, it's incredible what they do in a little town like this, and, you know, for him to run that many stores and still be on top of it, it only tells you of his staff and his management staff, how great they are, you know, and it's something that should be looked at, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gregel. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate you mentioning TIPS training without us having to ask about that. That, that means a lot to me personally. I also was looking at your application, and you, you know, not had a violation in anywhere in over, the last one was four years ago, and then most of them are over eight years ago, or way longer than that. So I really appreciate that, obviously, there's been some changes in how you're training. I do, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty clear by the numbers that we have. We have 41 licenses in our, in our community, but I do feel like they've done a really good job showing the reasons people had for and against, and I'm pretty, I just want to say, I really appreciate the, the training, and that your policy is to terminate staff members who have sales to minors. I appreciate those as, as policies for, for your organization, so thank you.
Eric, did we close the hearing yet, or?
Yep, so we're. We did close the public part of the hearing, so it's returned to you, and, you know, as you will recall, recently, I think within the last six months or so, you have found it to be more efficient to, when things were not something that you wanted to mull over, to make a decision tonight and direct me to prepare written findings and conclusions consistent with that decision and the evidence presented, as opposed to just having me prepare it both ways and you mull it over for two weeks. So whatever your preference is on that, you, you haven't adopted any particular policies or anything at this point.
Counsel Gregel?
I kind of, well, I agree with you, Counselor, but suburbs getting, getting kind of short, and I, I think if this counsel could do something to kind of move this forward faster, so they'll be able to, to still, you know, all these tours coming through and that, and be able to, to take advantage of that, I would, I would recommend that we skip the, still do the pros and cons, but maybe go ahead and make some kind of a motion to approve it tonight.
Counsel Brawls?
You, yes, I, that's been your practice as of late, and I think it's a very good and efficient practice on, in terms of timing with what you're saying, you still have to have written findings and conclusions.
Well, I still think this is a critical decision to our community, just because of the problems we have in our community, alcoholism, opioids, and I just don't like to see it exasperated. I mean, I, if you're going to make me make a decision today, because I still have doubt, I still don't see the needs. I mean, I'm not going to vote for it today unless, I would certainly like to see what Eric finds, and have his findings, and take our time before we make such a critical decision.
Counsel Carson?
I agree with, with Counsel Hensley and everyone else that, you guys did a great presentation. You've done your homework, you've done your research. I know your management staff personally, they're great, they're, they're great people. But I agree with Counsel Brawls. I have a really hard time just pushing another liquor store through in this community. That particular location, I know, is, you know, it's on the end of town, and there's probably less liquor stores there, but again, I still have a hard time pushing this through, especially with the fact that there is a couple of locations there where you can get alcohol. And I don't know as far as the financial part, you know, what it does for you guys, but I have a hard time. I really appreciate your presentation, but I am having a hard time with this particular one, especially because it does go to full strength on January 1st. I'm just putting that out there, so you guys understand where I'm coming from.
Can I just have a question? I don't know if I can say anything or ask anything, I just wanted to make a comment.
Eric, can he say anything?
Well, we've closed the, the hearing, so.
There's a difference between a full-strength beer and liquor stores, and there's, it's not, we can't sell everything, we're not, we're not even close.
Eric, is he allowed to?
He'll sell 6% though.
Yeah. That's not ID days, that's not wine, that's not spirits, that's not, that's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Daniel.
So I just have a question, Eric. So if we don't give you direction, and you end up doing both reports, you're not finding anything new, are you? Didn't we do all the findings already?
Well, you haven't made any written findings at all, so what I do, when I do that, is I condense what, what was presented at this hearing for your consideration, and you can and should amend that to comport with whatever your findings actually are, but they will be based on what was presented here. So there's nothing new between now and the September 5 meeting that's going to be brought in. It's all based on what's here. It's really just, you know, do you want to go home and rub your belly and think about it?
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have everything, there's nothing new that's going, you're going to, okay, thank you.
Nope, there will be nothing new. It's all got presented tonight.
Thank you.
Counsel Daniel, did you have a comment? Okay. All right, counsel, what are your wishes? Okay, somebody make a motion.
So I move that we go ahead and accept, sorry, I'm trying to, so the recommend, so I look, I move that we go ahead and direct Eric to go ahead and do a findings report with the idea that it's going to be positive or for, or in favor. Does that help? Are we doing the motion to approve today? I thought we, okay, so I move to approve.
Counsel Gregel?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried 5 to 2 with Counselors Brawls and Counselor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome. Okay. Counsel comments now. Any comments? Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have a couple. The broadband committee met today, as did the Revitalize the Rio Committee. I did not make it to broadband, because I was at the other one for a short time. The, while I was at the Revitalize the Rio, it was brought to my attention that because of the new trails that Heather mentioned, Christie Mountain Sports would like to invite city council members to ride fat bikes, is that what they're called? Andy? Okay, I had, I hadn't heard that term, and go out and check out our new trail, and so they were thinking about sending some dates and times, and we're going to work through Andy to present that, but I thought that would be a lot of fun and kind of a relaxing way to see the new trails and things like that. The other thing is I wanted to apologize to counsel and the community. I could not make it to the Kaboom Build this last weekend. It's the first one I've missed, but I hear that it went well, and so I apologize for not being there. I will also, I've already let Holly know this, I won't be here physically present on the 5th. I will be coming to that meeting via Zoom, so I want to let everybody know that. And then I didn't know, maybe we had talked about this at the retreat, but do we have a timeline on when we're going to adopt the policy manual?
We don't have a hard timeline. I would like to get it to you within the next few months.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counsel Vehil.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank. I would like to thank Andy and his staff for putting up a sign out at the Kaboom, the, Payton's Play Park. If you recall, last time I requested a sign, a temporary signage to tell kids not to hang off that Willow Hut and I got that in, so thank you for doing that. And then to reiterate what Mr. Gregor said, that offensive line and the offense from Adam State saved that project. We were getting crushed and they came in and saved the day. So thank you, Liz, and to the football team. I think, I don't, could we maybe send a thank you note to Coach and those guys and just say, right on, thank you for what you did? Thanks.
All right, good, good thought, good thought. Okay. Have a little bit more business to take care of, counsel. We have an executive session, an executive session in pursuit of CRS 24-6-402 for B and for E to receive legal advice from the city attorney concerning the interpretation of the People's Place annexation agreement and to instruct negotiations concerning annexation fees related to People's Place.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 for B and for E.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not start voting? Okay, Ms. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
We will enter into executive session after executive session is over. No further business will be discussed.